Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to assemble again to do the business of Cartersville, Georgia. We thank you for the leaders of this government, we thank you for the leaders of each department that satisfy the customers all over Cartersville, and we thank you for your grace and your mercy. Father, come down if one in the midst of this meeting, let us have vigorous discussion and let you be in charge. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All to the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Rin, Ward 6.
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of our meeting minutes from October the 18th. Council, you've had these well in advance, but tonight had an opportunity to look them over. Now's the chance to make any corrections, additions, deletions, or if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are celebrating National Hospice Month, and I have a proclamation that I will be presenting to Ms. Stephanie Lucas, who I think is back there. Would you like to step forward and say a few words before I read the proclamation? Kind of put you in a bad spot now, haven't I?
We just want to thank you for the opportunity to take care of patients here in Cartersville, and we thank you for taking the time to acknowledge that hospice is a great service and that we're part of your community.
Thank you. I have this proclamation, I will read and present to you.
Okay.
It says, "Whereas hospice is a program that works offering person-centered compassionate care ensuring people dignity, choice, and quality of life, the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management is a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and family caregivers. Whereas every year more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. And where care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced planning, excuse me, advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want. Therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, do hereby proclaim November of 2018 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and encourage citizens to express encouragement and appreciation for those services performed by hospice caregivers." Come down and present this to you. I'll come right there to you. Our next order of business, I'll turn it over to Ms. Brock.
Yes, Mayor. Upon Gary Riggs' retirement, Michael Hill has served as the interim superintendent of the gas department. With Mayor and Council's approval, I would like to appoint Michael Hill to be the permanent superintendent of the gas department.
Any discussion on this item? If not, Chair Lieutenant, a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Michael. I will now call upon our city clerk, Ms. Ulmer, to swear you in, so if you would step forward, please.
You can both raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm and a faithful compromise in the United States and of the state of Georgia, and that you will hold respect to the third amendment of your charter in order to the City of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully serve the Church of God.
Michael, we've all known you for a long time, we know that you enjoy speaking. I'll give you an opportunity to say anything you like. Just try to keep it brief, okay?
Okay. Well, I'll just say I thank you for your confidence in me, and I'll do, try to do the best job I can do for you.
Thank you, Michael, congratulations.
Do you have questions?
Ms. Reed, you have the next item.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to request the creation of a festival zone for the November 8th Under the Bridge Open House. This is at the request of one of our businesses under the bridge with the buy-in of all of her partners down there. They have the insurance, the application, the permission for road closures from all of our departments, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments for Lily? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed. We have the second reading of an ordinance, T-1805. Mr. Manino, if you will get us started on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you recall, this is a proposed text amendment to the existing signed ordinance. This amendment would actually take an existing billboard on East Main Street and allow it to be converted to digital. As we discussed in the work session, there was a previous variance on the billboard in question that actually conditioned it to not allow it to be a digital-type billboard. So with that, the applicant has considered requesting that y'all table this application tonight and let them go back and address the condition placed on it by the Board of Zoning Appeals. However, I'll let the applicant's representative get up and speak to that matter, but with that, we did take this to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is not required to make a recommendation on a signed ordinance amendment, but they did recommend approval, and it was forwarded to you, and this right now would be the second reading. If the applicant doesn't request it be tabled and y'all don't choose to table it, it would be the second reading of this ordinance.
Randy. I have a question real quick.
Go ahead.
The, basically this is to modify the ordinance just to allow for LED-type billboard to be in this section of the road?
Yeah, it actually amends two sections. Currently, billboards aren't even allowed on this section of the road. The ordinance was amended after the existing billboard was placed there.
So it's not to a specific piece of property, just in this area?
Correct. That is correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Seeing none, thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing relative to case T-1805 and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. Mr. Watkins, if you'll please give your address for our clerk, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. 128 West Cherokee Avenue, Cartersville, Georgia 30120. As Mr. Manino indicated, it came to light tonight that there is a condition that was placed on this, the current existing billboard back in 2012, that it could not be an LED. Without going into the specifics of that, I think it would probably better for the council if we address that before the Board of Zoning Appeals, before we go forward with the final reading of the text amendment. So what I would ask is that you table the second reading of this application for text amendment tonight and specially set it for the 20th of December. I think that's the next city council meeting. Because I think the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing would then be December the 17th.
I do have a question for Mr. Lovell, if you don't mind me.
Sure.
Just kind of sidebar in that. Certainly, if council were to decide to pass this text amendment without even, again, taking this condition that's popped up aside.
Correct.
Is it then possible, because if we pass it and then there's this condition, they've got to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals and go through, is there a way to, to basically to, I guess, to supersede, to have this text amendment to supersede that, and that way we would be able to pass it tonight and then prevent the applicant from having to go through that additional process, time and money?
Yes, there's one way that I can think of off the top of my head for y'all to do it. When you made a motion to approve the amendment as presented to you, you would make a motion to actually amend the language of that amendment and add something to the effect like, "This ordinance supersedes any previous conditions within this designated geographic area."
Placed on billboard currently existing within.
Within that geographic area.
Correct.
If you added language like that to this particular amendment, then that would supersede the BZA's previous decision because then it would no longer be a variance over on an ordinance. It wouldn't exist, so to speak. The other point I wanted to bring out from what Mr. Watkins asked y'all to do, if y'all choose to do it, is tabling it. Y'all really can't specially set it for December 20th. You know, our charter has a unique provision in it that y'all have to have two consecutive readings to approve an ordinance. So if y'all wanted to do what Mr. Watkins suggested there, what you would do is have the meeting, the first reading on December 4th, and I may have the date wrong, and then the second reading on December 20th.
Re-hear the first read.
As he said. So you would need to do that if you actually chose to do the tabling route instead of amending the text language.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Watkins actually has some proposed text language if y'all do decide to go that route, and he could share that with y'all.
The route of tabling or the route of superseding?
Superseding.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I did not want to get out in front of my skis and bring up the superseding issue with the current text amendment because I didn't know whether the council would even consider hearing that. Now, I would argue that the whole purpose of this text amendment and the way it is narrowly drafted is to be consistent with the remaining, I think, overlay district and ordinance of no billboards. The billboard exists there now. There's compelling reasons to convert it to LED, to a, I'm sorry, to a digital billboard for a lot of reasons, including trying to attract some business to downtown. It's not that the applicant is up here trying to put another billboard in that overlay district. So it was very narrowly drafted. I tried to craft it to where it would just be this billboard. If you pass the text amendment tonight, it might open the door for someone else to come in there and put one across the road, which I don't believe that's really, that's certainly not my client's intention, and I don't know if that really is in keeping with what the council or the city would want. The way to avoid that, in my opinion, in light of what Mr. Lovell just said, is to further consider changing the text amendment language, which part of it has already been revised by staff earlier today, and add a provision at the end that basically says, "Provided however," and I would ask Mr. Lovell comment on this, but just talking off the top of my head, "Providing however, this subsection supersedes any conditions previously placed on billboards related to this section." And that would admittedly just be this billboard it covers, but it would do two things. It would keep staff and the city from wasting their time going through this whole process again when, at the end of the day, I believe everybody, it appears they're okay with converting this billboard for the city and all the positive advantages it's going to do with business downtown. But more importantly, it's going to prevent someone from coming in here after today, tonight, tomorrow, and put another billboard there. So I would, I would ask that that be considered. If that's not the pleasure of the council, then I would say we need to talk about rehearing the first reading on either the 4th, 5th, or 6th, and then have the second reading again on the 20th of December.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Watkins at this point? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to step forward and speak for or against at this time? And seeing none, I'll turn it over to council.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll turn it over for further discussion or motion. It looked like, did you have a comment or question? You just look like you had that look in your eye. We'll make sure we have as much discussion as we can.
No, I was just going to say that we just, I mean, I'm for just doing it the most speedy way to do it instead of having to come back and do hearings and hearings, or readings and readings. So I just want to make sure that we do it in the right.
Procedure.
The right procedure, so we don't get caught back and somebody else wants to come back in there and put a billboard there because we didn't follow.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the text amendment with the added language that states roughly that it provides, however, this subsection only constitutes billboards previously already present on the specified section in the text amendment.
I don't think that would accomplish.
If I might, I can repeat that language because I did say it real quick, and I.
Just drop on up there, seventh council member.
Yeah.
Hold on just one second.
Yeah. Taff.
Can I just paraphrase his quote to add to my?
Yeah, but with Jeff's quote, and at the end of it, where he says, "In this section," it should say, "In the, in this geographic area."
Correct. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lovell.
So if you would read that again so Taff could incorporate that in his motion?
Okay. At the end of the proposed text amendment as read by, or as in your application today, as amended earlier today, "Provided." Provided however, there'll be a semicolon at the end of that, "Provided however."
This ordinance shall supersede.
Yeah, "This ordinance shall supersede any conditions previously placed on billboards in this geographical area."
That'll do it. Thank you for your comments.
Thank y'all.
Now, I would like to add, here's the language he just referenced to my motion to approve.
Does that cut legal muster?
That cuts legal muster.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Appears the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is, Mr. Reinhardt, come on forward, we got a budget amendment.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this will be the second reading of the 2017-18 budget amendment. As part of the close process, budgets are amended for general funds, special revenue funds, and the SPOS funds. This, by doing this, it will bring back the budget into the generally accepted accounting principles, standards. This is the second reading, no changes have been made since the first reading, and I recommend the approval of the attached ordinance amendment.
Okay. Any questions or discussion for Tom on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. Ms. Bolander, you have the next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the bid, bid request he sent out for the printing of the 2019 calendar. We sent the bid request to three of our local printers. We received one bid back from New Dimensions for $9,029.84, and I request your approval on this item.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Jones, you have three items, I believe.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. First up is our historic downtown water main replacement project. This has been going on for probably close to two years now. When we began the grant process and all the way through design to the point now where we have, have the project bid, those bids were opened on October 4th in this room. We had two bidders. The low bid came from RDJE Incorporated out of Noonan, Georgia. Their bid was $1,397,102.40. Do recommend this for your approval, and as we know from various times talking about it before, this will install almost 2,000 feet of new water main and allow us to take 1880s vintage water main out of service in the downtown area.
And obviously, this is going to be a rather intrusive project. I mean, if you want to make an omelet, you got to crack some eggs.
It will.
Will you please restate what we did in the work session about the timing of this?
Yes. The timing of this has been something that we have worked around from the early stages. It has been made extremely clear to us that this project would not commence between essentially Thanksgiving and New Year's, and it will not. I would estimate that you won't see anything happen on this project until after the first of the year. There's a lot of administrative functions that we have to go to to get it off the ground. You have to order the material. Will take quite a while to deliver, so you will not see any work on this start before the 2019 year.
I'm sure the downtown merchants appreciate that.
I'm sure they do.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one for you, please, Bob.
Yes, sir. Next up is the Barco County Purchase Meter on Grassdale Road. The county approached us about constructing a new interconnection point to purchase water from us along Grassdale Road. As we have done multiple times in the past, the county will pay for the construction of that point. We would like your approval, though, for one thing, this is a little bit different in the past, we would like to install a new metering system in conjunction with this project. This is something we want to do, therefore, we would pay for it. You can think of this as an R&amp;D project, if you like. Essentially, what we'd like to do is install an electronic meter, a mag meter. We do not use mag meters for billing. They have improved vastly over the years, and we have found one that we would like to put into this environment. The county will construct our conventional metering system, which will allow us to compare it to the new metering system right in line. If that is successful, this is something that we would want to roll out to all, really all, of our county interconnect locations, any high-volume customer, because it will actually give us real-time water usage at any point in time that we need it and allow us to respond to demand, to make better water plant operation decisions, and it will allow us to measure peaking factors and a lot of data that just gets obscured in monthly readings like we do now. The meter in question is a, it's a sole source, it's, there's a distributor network, and in Georgia, Consolidated Pipe is the distributor of this equipment, and they have provided a cost of $13,213.31. That would include the meter, the meter vault, and the fittings necessary to install it. I would ask you for not to exceed authorization of $20,000. As we stated in the work session, this is more a factor of generating a round number for this project. It is not a project that we budgeted for, just due to timing. So what we'd like to do is transfer $20,000 from a maintenance account into a capital construction account to fund this, so there will be no net increase in our budget, and that will just give us a nice round figure for those, for those budget changes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
To $20,000.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
We've got a bunch of seconds and thirds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Stay right there. Bob, we have one item to add. Chair Lieutenant, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Add that item. Do you have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. On a second.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added. Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, sir. As we discussed earlier, our 12-year-old GPS unit that we use to shoot locations for pipe bins, valves, those types of things, to develop our maps of the system, it actually decided to stop working this morning about 10 o'clock. We took the unit down, had it looked at. It has had an internal hardware failure, and we have the options of spending roughly $8,200 to fix a 12-year-old computer, or we can spend $10,149 to replace the whole thing. So I guess the good news is, is they made it easy on us, in my opinion. I would recommend that we replace the hardware and move on.
All right.
That was from Optical Engineering.
All right. Chair Lieutenant, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favoring, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Chief McHale.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to replace a copier, printer, scanner that's in our Administrative Services section of the Police Department. We got three bids. The best bid we got was a Toshiba for $5,019.40. It's a budgeted item, and I request approval. And our existing one is kind of costing us a lot of money in repairs.
Very good. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you have the next several.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The first item is a renewal for health insurance for our employees for 2019, currently with United Healthcare, and they came in with a rate increase of just under 26% for our employee insurance plan. We had Shaw Hankins bid out those services for several different companies. Blue Cross and Blue Shield came in with another fully insured product at 10.5% increase over current premiums. Cigna is another fully insured product at 7.5%, and there are some other companies that provided self-infunded plan quotes, but we have been on their fully insured for the past couple of years, and that's a recommendation to continue at this point in time as our claim costs keep rising. The recommendation is to really go with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, if the council elect to. It's, again, a 10.5% increase for that. We've had Cigna in the past, we actually had both companies in the past, but Cigna claims, we had a claim to issue with them in the past, and it's, causes a lot of time issues with our HR department to work with our staff and our employees who have claim issues. They weren't processing EOBs correctly, and so it would just be easier for us to move forward with Blue Cross and Blue Shield at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from Mr. Porter on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item there is the Medicare Supplement Renewal for our retired employees. We've been with United Healthcare on that one. Actually, it's a 0.6% rate decrease, and I recommend approval of that renewal.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. This next item, the Employee Wellness Program, do I need to get a motion to table that, or can I just do that on my own?
Oh, you would need a motion to table.
Okay. I would, I'm recommending to council, based on our conversation in the work session, that I think there's a few of us that need a little bit more information, myself included, in order to make a right and proper decision, so I'll kindly request somebody make a motion to table this item.
Motion to table that item for you there, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Stepp?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the item will be tabled. We'll put that on the next agenda. Thank you for that, council. And the final item of the night, Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor and Council. What we have is Fire Station Number 3, which is part of 2014 SPOS funding. As you recall from the prior meeting, we met with Abuck Incorporated, the construction manager at risk, to determine if we can, if they can bring the cost down on the estimated guaranteed maximum price. They initially came in at $3,563,044. After meeting with them, they were able to reduce it down by $236,000 to $3,326,978. Some of those items they took out of there were the generator, which we said we could contract directly with and save some money, as well as they took out a gear locker, which Chief Carter had mentioned they don't need that, but some other items with the low voltage, which has access to control and cameras in the building. So as you can see from the overhead, we basically are having a net savings of $161,000 is what the difference is, once you add back the generator and some others, other costs that we know we're going to have to do. So what, if the council is elected to do this one this evening, I would ask that your approval be that you select Abuck Incorporated at their guaranteed maximum price of $3,326,978, and for the mayor and the city clerk to sign any and all documents related to that, because I have not even got with Mr. Lovell to draft that contract, and I will put in the contract as we've done in most other CM at risk, where the city will retain 100% of the savings if they come in under that amount.
Okay. Is that, are good?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Porter on this?
I'd just say thanks for, to the staff, especially you and Chief Carter. $161,000 is a lot of money from two weeks ago, so good job negotiating with them.[1791.12]
I'll second that.
Any other comments or discussion? If not, a motion's in order, Jase.
I'll make a motion to approve ABUC for this contract on Fire Station Number Three.
I'll also second that.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I, it's like a, I understand, but wait, there's more.
Yes. It was part of Jase's motion, but it was part of Dan's request. I believe Dan is also authorized, wanted you to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign an as-presented contract, which will be drafted in the future, so they don't have to bring that back before y'all. Y'all can add that if you don't want to.
Councilman Steph, would you chair to, hear the end of your motion for that?
Yeah, I'd like to. I want to amend my motion, add Keith's reliable wording.
Okay. And is your second still hold?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, still hold? Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lovell, for that. I did, we do have to add one more item, and I will ask council to add that item.
Motion to add an item?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Mr. Lovell, take it over.
Mayor, we've received an anti-anim notice on October 15th of this year from the Yext Law Group regarding a incident regarding a claim involving an arrest by the City of Cartersville Police Department. As this matter is still currently within the court system, it is recommended that the city denies this at this time via resolution, as y'all normally do.
So a motion to deny the anti-anim claim would be in order?
Yes.
Make a motion to deny.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Any other business that needs to come to the council this evening? There's none. Chair, we entertain a motion
Subma.
To adjourn.
Yeah.
Adjourn. Cheers for Charlie.